Regular City Council Meeting of September 17, 2018 to order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljgren, second by Councilmember Knopfler, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for the special work session meeting of September 4, 2018, the regular meeting of September 4, 2018, the closed meeting of September 4, 2018, the special work session budget meeting of September 13, 2018. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lundberg, for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills for checks number 99223 through 99304 totaling $216,615.34. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Hanson, for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentation of the proclamations, grant award, scholarship, Minnesota State Historic Preservation Conference. Maxine String. Laurie?
So, every year, a member of our Heritage Preservation Commission is retired, is required to attend Minnesota State Historic Preservation Conference, and each year, the historic preservation gives out grants to cities to cover the cost of the attendance of the registration of the conference. And this year, the city was a recipient of that scholarship award, and Maxine will be attending the conference on behalf of the city.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the scholarship.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock, to accept. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Proclamation, infants remembered in silence, October 15, 2018. Mayor?
Okay, I guess I'll read this. Whereas infants remembered in silence, Incorporated and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy and through yearly childhood, whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. Whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, nonprofit organization, was founded in 1987 to support parents whose children, child's last children died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, and sudden unexplained death, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infant and early childhood deaths. Whereas we re, parents around the world remember their children annually on October 15, lighting of a candle at 7:00 PM, where some parents will remember their child slash children in their homes, while others will attend small gatherings around the state, across the nation around the world to unify in tribute to their children. Whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Now therefore, I Gregory J. Zelka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2018, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in Little Falls, signed this 17th day of September, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. Animal control report, August 2018, receive. Building report, August 2018, receive. Differral of special assessments, 2018A, approve. Fire report, August 2018, receive. Groundskeeper Brian Lindquist and Eric Sfor, golf course authorized. Housing redevelopment authority minutes, June, July, and August 2018, receive. Mayor's appointment, Joint Airport Zoning Board, Al Stensel and Jerome Valentine, accept, approve. Planning commission minutes, April, May, and July of 2018, receive. Waste water report, August 2018, receive. Water report, August 2018, receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Liljgren, to approve the consent. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, real quick, I just noticed on item E for groundskeeper, the groundskeepers, I don't know if you're aware of why Brian Lindquist is available to work at the golf course as a groundskeeper, but look into it. Another city council, the way they handled his employment is an absolute embarrassment, and I just want to say that publicly.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, we have none. Old business, ordinance number 11, 7-series rezoning request, CHI St. Gabriel's Hospital, introduced 9/4/2018. Adopt. Greg?
Yeah, this, if you recall, CHI is looking at doing an expansion as part of the requirements that the planning commission had would be to rezone all of the parcels from R2 to R3. Part of their property is currently under R2, part of it is under R3, so to be consistent, the planning commission is recommending rezoning all of that to R3, and this is the second reading of that, of that ordinance.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zelka, adopt ordinance number 11, 7-series rezoning request. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ordinance caller, roll please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Waste water treatment facility improvement plan, option, council? I think we heard from both firms tonight in looking for direction, if we want to continue down the path with vetting the pond system, or if we're looking to move forward with the mechanical plant. Basically, our two options. So, we need discussion or thought from the council?
I'd like to ask Lee and Greg, what's your opinions individually?
I'm Lee Bundy, your water and wastewater supervisor. My feelings won't be hurt, whichever option you choose. My opinion is that I want to make sure this council got to see all options ahead of you before you spend $22 million on something that locks you in. It's a lot of money. The value engineering, that's like when you buy a house, you hire an inspector to come in and look and see if you're getting what you're paying for. So, that's, that quotient of the value engineering. Colin? I can work with him. I've worked with him. He's an okay guy. Took his kids to Disneyland. So, you know, it's not a competition. It is what is best for the city of Little Falls. I wouldn't have thought a pond option was available, but it is. So, I think it's really important that you look it over first. I've operated four activated sludge oxidation ditches. I can do those things in my sleep. I probably haul as much poop as you have and spread it around. So, in my case, you know, my feelings won't be hurt either way. I personally think the pond option is the better option.
I would like to see the pond option fully vetted. I'll echo Lee's sentiments, not in regards to the much poop, but the pond option is easier to operate. It is less difficult to operate. It takes a lower, I don't want to say a lower grade operator, because we have great staff at Little Falls, but it's a B license as opposed to an A license, so it's easier to get qualified candidates to operate that, that facility. I would like to see it 100% vetted. I know both options will, will work, but knowing, knowing that it's easier to operate, there's less things to go wrong on a pond system, it allows these guys to, you know, sleep at night, if you will, knowing that there's only 30 pumps as opposed to 140 pumps that they have to worry about. So, before I commit and say, yep, we're doing an oxidation ditch, I would like to see if that pond would work out there or not.
John, what's your thoughts?
I think John recommended us to...
I, I give, my, my opinion or recommendation was to hear from, from the, the firms that, with their plans that they were, they're presenting. I appreciate also for the audience, the staff, wastewater staff that, that attended tonight. I think it's very important that they are here to witness, understand, hear, hear your questions, hear your concerns, hear your reasonings behind if, if you are to decide where you're going to go with what, what the decision is. So, I, I, either way, I am comfortable that they're going to, they're going to work. I think there's a lot of different ways that you can get to the end result and what you're putting back into the river, that it meets the, meets the regulations. I think that we've really explored hard the mechanical option and that the work that was done did the best it possibly could to maximize in the environment that, of additional grant funds that are out there. And I, I don't know, because I'm not privy to experience with building an aerated pond system, the, the grant dollars that would be available for that and understanding what it would take to get those versus what we went through to, to get the mechanical plant. I had a similar experience in Madison with trying to acquire the, the mechanical plant grant dollars. I would say that it's, it took three years. So, if you, in order to get them, because they're not always there, and that said, even if we looked at this and we're going off, trying to get on a PPL list in order to get qualified for funding, it takes time to, to move up that list, and it takes a lot of, a lot of effort. So, even, even with that, really understanding it down to the apples to apples, dollars to dollar comparison, I just know we've spent money, we have grants available. It'd be hard to swallow throwing, you know, moving on to a different system if we, if we choose, so.
Mr. President.
Good, Mayor.
SEH has done an awful lot of work for us. They're very reputable at what they do, and my understanding was that we had like three options that we were purposely looking at. So, when I was in favor of investing in the value engineering, I thought I was going to take one of those plans and do, get the value engineering on that. And so, when we came up with a whole new plan, I think that threw all of us for a little bit of a loop. The process between when we started and where we are today, I'm rather disappointed in how that's gone. I'm not going to dwell on it, but to go through that again and then potentially not have the opportunity to get the grand dollars that we've secured and reinvest whatever it's going to take to go through this again. I understand it's $20 million project, and if we have to invest another million, do save a couple million over 40 years or whatever it is, I just, I have some concerns about vetting it more because I don't know what that vetting's going to do. I think with the proper process and trading of information from the start, I think we might not have been in this merry-go-round that we're on. That's all.
Well, just to elaborate on that a little bit, Greg, that we hired them to do value engineering, and they didn't do the value engineering. We got a different plan. So, what's going to happen when we go to look at them to fully vet the program? Are we going to get what we're looking for, or are we going to get something different? That's my concern. We've worked with 15 different consulting firms in the past, and we've seen, been on this road before. The cheaper ain't better.
I can't, I concur with that, Mr. President. That being said, actually, at this time, I'm, I'm prepared to, well, I'm not prepared. I am going to offer a motion that we proceed with the plan as engineered by SEH. It's not too often that I'm going to go against the recommendation of the waste and water superintendent and the city engineer, but in this case, I'm more comfortable with it given the reputation of SEH. They've sent four of their people here tonight to back up their plan. Colin came here a month ago. He took us on a tour a couple of years ago. So, I, I have trust in, in, in our dealings with them, that they have provided a plan that is our best option. Besides the construction, land acquisition, demolition, operation, and maintenance, there's the intangibles I brought up before. I don't like the potential location, nor would the neighbors of an arriation pond appreciate having that next door to them. And I travel a lot for work around the state, around the country. Frankly, they look ugly. Aesthetically, they're not pleasing either. So, that's my, my motion with caveats.
I guess, I'll put my input in.
Well, we've got one motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
For further discussion?
Okay.
So, motion by me, by Councilmember Hanson, and second by Mayor Zelka, to continue with the mechanical plant with SEH. Discussion?
Yes. The plant, existing plant, since I've lived in this town, there's been complaints about it, location. If, if you're talking about neighbors, there's less neighbors out there than in town. So, that's not an issue with me. I've always thought it would be a better idea, and most people in this community would prefer the plant wasn't in town if you go according to what's been said for years. I respect the two opinions that were given by our employees concerning this because they know a heck of a lot more than us. We can pretend we know something. I know the basics of both operations. I've listened to them. They both sound very professional. I wouldn't get down on either side there, but I'm going to go according to who we hired and who knows a lot more than I do. So, basically, I'm voting that way. Everyone else can vote their own way, which we always do anyway, but I'm just giving you my reasons.
I appreciate Greg's researching this and getting information and having the best interest of the city of Little Falls long-term. I wish that we would have looked at this a little more closely when we started it. I kind of think we're to the point with the grant dollars where a bird in hand is worth two in the bush, and we need to go ahead with what we've started.
Any other discussion?
I think that we shouldn't rule out a pond system without really figuring out what it means. I think it's preliminary to say no to a pond system when we haven't fully vetted it. Even though we can get grant dollars before we spend 20 million, we should spend another million to decide if it's, really is a better plan.
Are you sure we can get grand dollars?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Oh, you just said I'm sure we can get grand dollars.
I don't think that's what I said.
That's what I understood.
Well, I think it, it's been vetted by SEH when they done their preliminary. Before we started, if the pond option would have been an option, they would have went down that path.
So, before you drew up any of, I wasn't here when you first started, so when the city first hired you to do this, I wasn't part of this process. So, you checked into it fully, completely, 100% before you drew up the existing plans, the 90% done ones.
Colin, if you want to go ahead and answer. Yeah, go ahead.
So, to answer your question, the aerated pond facility was reviewed before the facility plan was even started. It was also reviewed during the time of this value engineering study. Both times, we said it's not a good long-term solution for the city of Little Falls for several different reasons, which we already discussed, so I won't get back into those, but both times, we had said that it's not a good long-term solution.
Okay, that was said before I came on board.
Mr. President, may I?
Go ahead.
I do have an email back from February 27 of 2017 where SEH was asking me in regards to the facility plan to give them comments, and my response to them, because at the time they were looking at submitting it, I said, I'd like to see where the pond system comes in before we submit to the MPCA. I don't believe it was fully vetted. I believe a faceted pond was, was vetted, but, but not an aerated pond, so I guess take it for what it's worth.
What and how long does it take to check it out, if that's what we're going to do? Because time's ticking on the grand dollars.
Time is ticking, there is no doubt. We need to dig some holes to see where the, the modeling is at on the soils, and then we would have to see what archaeological, environmental would take over there. That second part is going to be the longest component of it, and I don't know if Scott has a better handle in terms of timeline on it, but to see where the modeling is at, where the water table, that's going to be pretty quick. It's hiring a backhoe and digging some holes. Scott, do you have any idea in terms of the environmental stuff?
The environmental would be environmental review, just the NEPA type, sorry, we'll just say the environmental clearances. We do biological and likely at least a desktop archaeological review. I think we could do the majority of that work in four to six weeks. That would, that would require getting, getting someone on board to do it promptly, but there, there is a process with it. There would likely at least be able to answer the initial questions for that, and then there are solicitation letters that have to go out to agencies, so some of that second step could take more time, and those are some of the things that are, that are already done with the mechanical facility plan. Regarding, I guess, when I say fully vetting the pond system, part of what I mean are some of those items, but I also feel like there is, there is still some uncertainty. Just looking at the two presentations, it's obvious that we have some different assumptions on, some on capital costs, but definitely some different assumptions on operations and maintenance costs, which is really the biggest component of there, of the, the question between the two systems. I would be more than willing with, if the council wanted to, to sit down with the, with my friends at SEH and go through some of those. I think we could work out what those assumptions are and, and get that basis. There is a wide range of value engineering, what can fall under that broad banner. This was on the lighter end. If the council so chose to go through and do the more in-depth, again, I think that separate effort, but that's probably on a four, six-week timeframe. I, I don't see that, getting to that next level of answering questions, I don't see as being a long schedule.
Any other discussion?
Just in reply to Mr. Gushak, it would be my suspicion that half of our residents don't even know where our sewer plant is right now.
That's your opinion?
That's right. It's my opinion. Just giving it to you.
You'd be surprised.
Plus, it's in the ward I represent. It's kind of, it's tucked away. People that don't know it's, don't already know it's there would have no clue it's there unless we're having problems with our microbes. Then everybody knows it's there. Otherwise, it's in a decent spot.
What kind of a cost would that take?
If you're okay, I'm going to defer that to Scott.
It's not just Scott, though?
Yeah.
Because unless we're going to let people talk to each other to really figure something out, there's no point.
Yeah, I, I did not, I did not, in retrospect, that's a question I probably should have been ready to answer tonight. I did not do that estimate before we came, but I would guess that answering that next level of question is on the order of tens of thousands of dollars. It's not, it's not millions of dollars, and it really depends on what that looks like. If it's both of us together, I think we'd have to put our heads together and see what kind of hours that would take.
Got a motion on the table? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Call for public hearing, Minnesota investment grant, Minnesota investment fund grant application, Barrett Egg Services. Laurie?
Yes, and John, you can contribute as well. We're asking the city council to call for a public hearing. We've been working with Barrett Egg Services, Barrett Pet Food Innovations for a project here in Little Falls. They're considering some MIF financing, and we're still in early stages of, of talks and getting things together, but we did want to call for the public hearing for Monday, October 15 at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers. Again, it would be for MIF financing, something we did similar for Larson Boats and for Wabash. So, in this case, it's $450,000.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to call for the hearing. Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Knopfler, to call for public hearing for Barrett Egg Services. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Petition, vacate alley, block seven, theirs addition. Receive. Greg?
Yeah, this evening, we have a petition to vacate the alley. Tonight, we're just asking the council to receive it. We'll come back at another time, point in time with the percentages and such.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to receive.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to receive the petition. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-53, preliminary 2019 levy. Adopt. Laurie?
I'll defer to city administrator.
Okay.
This is, with the, with the numbers that we indicated on our special meeting last Thursday, this would yield a, an increase to $4,44,000 for levy, including all of the debt service, market end-rendment, and the EDA, fire relief, parking, and then general fund balance that we need for revenue. This is a preliminary levy, as always. This is the levy that we can set, but we cannot increase. We do fully expect that this levy number to go down. It, at this point, is an 8.02% increase from the previous year.
What's the wish of the council on resolution 2018-53?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljgren, for resolution 2018-53. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution caller, roll please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-54, preliminary 2019, housing redevelopment authority levy. Laurie? John?
This is another levy that, this one is actually set based on an estimated market, taxable market value for the county that the county auditor's or assessor's office So the estimated levy for HRA this year would be $87,000. This is an increase from the previous year. Therefore, it would be, it is assumed, we are assuming that the taxable market value in our community is increasing, which is a good thing.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt 2018-54.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve Resolution 2018-54. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-55, preliminary 2019 budget and five-year capital improvement plan. John?
Yes, again, more from the information. These are the compiled total department revenues. We do have to segregate general fund, special revenue, which includes HRA, EDA, all of our Parks and Recreation, and the Airport Commission, and our enterprise funds. So these are typically the utility funds, including water, wastewater, storm sewer, garbage and recycling, and the golf course are incorporated in those funds. So those totals are seen in the resolution. Again, this is for the proposed budget preliminary levy, which is an increase, which we fully expect to go down. However, there's some, a lot of uncertainties between now and December when we set that final levy. So we do appreciate that, the opportunity to expect to build in some buffers and some conservative estimates on the higher side for expenses.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion on Resolution 2018-55. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Knopfle to approve Resolution 2018-55. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Budget and levy 2019 informational meeting, December 3rd, 2018. Call. Laurie?
So every year, we are required to have a public meeting to discuss our budget and our proposed levy. We typically, as a city, hold that meeting at our first, or hold the public hearing at the first meeting in December, which is December 3rd. And it would be at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Liljgren, second by Councilmember Lundberg to approve the meeting of December 3rd for the budget and levy. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-56, accept feasibility report and call for public hearings. Public Improvement 375, Trunk Highway 27. Adopt, Greg?
Yeah, this evening, I'm asking the council to accept the feasibility reports and call for the public hearing. This is our Trunk Highway 27 project, basically from the west end of town all the way over to a little past Ninth Street, east over by Lindbergh School. I didn't prepare a presentation tonight because we'll have that at the public hearing, but I do have the feasibility report in the packet for your reference.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilor Alderman Hercock to approve Resolution 2018-56. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-57, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing. Public Improvement 375, certain adjustment, certain adjacent streets to Trunk Highway 27?
These are the streets we discussed at our last meeting in regards to adjacent to Trunk Highway 27. You saw the images of our sanitary sewer. So the feasibility report is in there. We're calling for the public hearing again at our October meeting. I don't recall the second one in there, October 15th?
15th.
15th, yep. So we'll have that public hearing at that point if the council approves this resolution.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt 2018-57.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve Resolution 2018-57. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Carries.
Planning Commission Recommendation, CHI, St. April's Hospital Expansion. Greg?
So on September 10th, the Planning Commission has a public hearing in regards to St. April's Hospital or CHI. CHI is looking at putting an eight-foot tall fence on the property line adjacent to the residential properties, where they're looking at putting the parking stall or new parking lot. So the Planning Commission recommendation is to approve the eight-foot fence on the property line as requested by CHI.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-58?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfle, second by Mayor Zilka to approve Resolution 2018-58. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
You had mentioned on the property line, do we have the proper ordinance language to allow it to be on the property line without the neighbor's consent? Or do we have neighbor consent?
Well, we do not have neighbor consent, but we do have the ordinance allows zero-foot setback on the, oh, zero-foot setback on the property if it's maintenance-free material. So, vinyl or whatnot, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did all the neighbors agree? Are they happy with the idea of having an eight-foot-high fence?
It's only adjacent to one parcel.
One owner, one parcel?
She requested it, so.
That's the question.
Yes.
Okay, you answered it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-59, variance building setback and impervious coverage in residential zoning?
So as part of the hospital expansion, St. April's Hospital, CHI, requested a variance from the building setback currently in either R1 or R2. If you recall, right now, it's R3 with the new rezoning. The hospital setback requirements in those two districts are 50 feet. They're requesting a setback of zero-foot setback from the property line for that. And then they're also requesting the impervious coverage limits to go from 75%, as it currently says in the ordinance, to 80%, which is being proposed. Normally, the 50-foot setback is from property line. But in this situation, it's a little unique, whereas we have right-ofway in between that and a neighboring parcel. So they still have the 50-foot from a neighbor's property line, but the right-ofway is in between those two parcels. So the Planning Commission is recommending approval of both of those variance requests this evening.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve Resolution 2018-59. Any discussion?
Yes, concerning impervious coverage, say, for instance, we did have something happen that there's more runoff than there should be and affects neighbors and does damage to their property and that, would they have the right to come back and sue the city for?
So what we have in our ordinance right now is, any of the new impervious surfacing that they have, that they create, they have to provide stormwater treatment for that. They're proposing a stormwater pond or infiltration ditch for that additional runoff. If, for whatever reason, if it doesn't infiltrate the way that they anticipate, then we can go back to them and say, "You need to do additional measures in there for that stormwater." So we do have that built into our ordinance.
I understood that, I just wanted to bring it out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Carries.
Any reports? Announcements? No, actually, public comment is at the beginning. So we will recess the closed city council meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, subdivision 3A, discuss city administrator performance evaluation.